Welcome to the School Committee regular meeting of Thursday, February 13th, 2020. We're going to open tonight's meeting with some new artwork. So tonight, the artwork is from the Stratton School. And the teacher at the Stratton School is Melody Wolf-Thomas. The Stratton School Art Program follows the Teaching for Artistic Behavior (TAB) model. TAB is a philosophy that regards the students as artists in the classroom as their studio. A TAB program is learner-directed, emergent, and honors student choice. So I'm not going to be talking about each of the bulletin boards. So if you want to go ahead and pan on ACMI, starting each of the bulletin boards, that would be great. Students learn about art media techniques in the art world. Projects are student-led and teacher-supported. The studio is arranged in centers, and students have the choice of what centers they would like to work in each day. Exploring their own ideas and purposes, determining the purpose of their art, as well as reflecting on their work, are fundamental components of a TAB program. In this show, grades K through five are represented. Each piece is accompanied by an artist statement that gives further insight into the artwork. We hope you enjoy the varied and unique voices of our young artists at Stratton. To learn more about Teaching Artistic Behavior, you can visit the website, which is one long word, teachingforartisticbehavior.org. All right, and we'll give one more minute to complete the cycle of the various bulletin Thank you to all the Stratton artists for sharing your artwork with us. All right, next, we'll move on to public comment. Each participant will have up to three minutes to speak. And pursuant to open-meeting laws, the school committee generally will not address the topics discussed, but they may be discussed at a future meeting or referred to a subcommittee. So the first person on the list is Courtney Rodland. Please come up to the table and state your name again and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Courtney Rodland, and I have two children in Arlington Public Schools, one at Hardy and one at Oxen. And I am here as a current representative of the Arlington Ski Team. For the past few years, Arlington has had a ski team that's been operating as a club, and they've had about 20 kids on the team this year. Though they're a new team and a smaller team than the other schools that we've been participating against, they've had a great showing. We had two students this year who placed in the top 10 and would have been able to compete at the state level, but right now, since we're a club sport and we're not a recognized school-sponsored varsity sport, unfortunately, they've had to concede and give their spots to children from other schools. So skiing is an MIAA sport, and I believe that having this funded and supported by the schools will offer more opportunities for children with varied interests to participate in sports where they can engage and socialize with their peers, and also it will provide opportunities for students of all genders. I have really enjoyed being a part of the team this year. It's a very dedicated group of parents and children, very dedicated. And my impression is from the community that there are many other parents and children who will be looking to get their children involved in this sport. Of course, there are budget considerations, though it seems like the coach and organizers have done their homework in talking to the other schools about their budgets. And compared to other high school sports, it seems like a relatively low-budget item, though we are asking to be considered in the budget to be a school-sponsored sport in the future. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. All right, and next, we have Kate Leary.
Hi, I'm Kate Leary. I have children at the Hardy School and the Gibbs School. Do I need to say anything else? Like, okay. So I'm here because I just happened to see on your Arlington that the budget was being discussed tonight, and I know you've been working on this all winter long and that there are a lot of considerations. So I was able to grab it like an hour ago and look at it. So I have some preliminary questions with the understanding that, I know you don't respond to them directly, but you are discussing the budget tonight. So it's really great to see so many things from the five-year strategic plan being, starting to be realized in this budget. I did have a question. One of the big things in the override and in the budget, maybe not big monetarily, but I think kind of important, was librarians and library books, that the school department is paying for library books in the elementary schools again, which I think is important in terms of just showing the school department's values, as well as on a very practical level. And I didn't see it called out anywhere on the budget for this year, and I'm curious about that. It might be that it's a technicality because of where the money comes from. But I did notice that dedicated art supplies are in the budget, which I think is great. I noticed that you said that the principals are paying for them out of their budgets, but I can also attest that PTOs have been heavily funding art supplies. Hardy has had $1,000 worth of art supplies in our budget for years. So I think this is great. I'm curious if the library books could be called out in the same way, and if there's a technical reason that they can't be. Is it possible to at least name them in the narrative, you know, maybe under whatever sort of heading they would fall under? Because I think that, I know that budgeting is done on an annual level, but I think it's important for us to see that the school department is continuing to support that. Another note about library books is that although the money, $5,000 a year, is in the elementary school budgets, I know that there have been some logistical problems with actually getting them, actually being able to order them and get them into our schools. I'm not totally sure where that stands now, or if it's been worked out, but I hope that that's being prioritized, sorting out how to do POs, and make sure that books can get into libraries in a timely fashion, because I know PTOs are still being asked to fund simply because they can write a check faster than the school department. I don't expect the school department can do it with the same speed, but I expect that they could do it within a couple of months, and I'm not sure that that's happening right now. I'd love to be corrected on that if I'm wrong. So that was what I wanted to say. Thank you for your work on the budget.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public participation? All right. So the next item on our agenda is the trip, the approval of the Arlington High School France and England trip. And Lisa Clark will be presenting that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Clark. I'm a history teacher at the high school. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you this evening. I've never done this before, so do I go? Do you go? How does this work here? Would you like a summary?
Yeah, so generally, we just get a very brief summary of the reason behind the trip. And then we have the materials, and we can ask questions if there's anything else.
Okay, great. So I was fortunate enough to chaperone the EF-led tour of Holocaust history last year, and it was just an amazing experience for me and for the students, and it gave me an opportunity to interact with students in a different way and to really kind of globalize the history that we teach, sometimes with an American, you know, primary perspective. And when I was looking at the other tours that EF offered, I saw this tour of the Western Front of World War II, visiting numerous sites in England as well as France. And I was very intrigued by the opportunity and the possibility to globalize American history, and particularly in regard to historical memory. This is something that all of the history classes have been talking about, particularly in response to the controversies in recent years in the United States with removal of statues of Confederates and not even Confederate soldiers. But Stephen Foster, for instance, had his statue removed, the statue of him in Pittsburgh removed. And so just this discussion of historical memory and this trip offers our students the opportunity to see how the American participation in World War II is remembered in various countries throughout the world. And also, students would get the opportunity to visit sites like the D-Day invasion and cemeteries. They would also get a chance to take a ferry across the English Channel and kind of experience perhaps some of the route that some of the soldiers took on their way to fight during World War II. And so when I saw this tour, I was very excited about the possibility of taking students on a trip to, again, add to their understanding of this global event and to build on this discussion of historical memory.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Seuss.
No, I just have a comment.
Oh, comment? Yes, sorry.
Same comment I had last time we talked about trips, which is in the pre-trip prep. There's a sentence there that I find objectionable, which is that the history teachers will be asked to mention to their classes of sophomore, juniors, and seniors, the sort of inner requirement that the teachers mention within a class time about the trip. Because these are not sponsored by the school, we do provide a resource, like a room to meet, there is sometimes a message sent out, but I just think it's inappropriate to have it require teachers to mention in their classrooms.
Okay, if I wrote, "teachers are required to mention it," that wasn't my goal.
I think it's their standard thing, so I think it was taken out in the other thing we're going to approve. I'd love to see it taken out here as well.
That's fine with me. I would just ask my colleagues in the history department if we could possibly place posters, you know, in the history hallways or throughout the school. It won't be a requirement that history teachers are, you know, asked to use class time to promote this trip in any way, but, you know, perhaps during passing, if there are signs up and students have questions, if teachers could direct them my way.
Okay. Mr. Hayner.
I think the trip is an exciting trip. I, Henry, what is available for those students that don't go to sort of balance the knowledge and experience that these students are going to have? Is there something that, for the students that are not able to go for whatever reason, that they can experience too? They're not going to be able to go, but I didn't know if there's any videos or anything like that. Have you considered that?
I have. I mean, I am actually currently enrolled in a class with Primary Source about globalizing American history. So from my professional standpoint, I would love to gather resources and video and photographs that I could use in my classroom as well, and I could share with the other members of the history department, again, to add to that kind of globalization of World War II. I haven't researched what videos are currently available on these particular sites to add into my classroom, but using kind of virtual field trips is something that I have implemented in my classes over past years, using museum websites and things like that. So it is my hope as well, from my professional standpoint, that I'll be able to get experience and resources that I can build into my lessons.
I just think it's important, because there are students that are not going to be able to afford this, and I'm really concerned. We're a public entity, and I think going is great, but it'd be great if everyone could go. Thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Schlickman.
In the application that we have before us, we have Day Three in London, and then the following page is Day Seven in Normandy. I think we're missing Days Four, Five, and Six.
I have an updated itinerary that I can provide you with copies of. I had double-checked, and I was under the impression that every day was accounted for, but I have a detailed itinerary that I can provide you with right now if.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great.
Absolutely.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Just to speak to Mr. Schlickman's point, I think what he's saying is that the itinerary as printed in the form, I think there's some technical difficulties with the Google form. We're missing some of the pages.
Okay.
I noticed that we're missing a question, which is, what is the process for students who may have difficulty paying for the trip? And additionally, we're missing whatever page has Days Four through Seven. The itinerary was appended at the end from whatever the company is. But I guess my question is, I don't have a problem approving this. I'm assuming the information is actually out there. We just didn't get it in our PDF, but I would ask that the administration go through and see the pages that we're missing right now.
I have that information here on the floor.
Karen is?
Sorry, it was two-sided as well.
Yeah, it may have two-sided to one side.
On the floor, for sure. So just the itinerary is missing.
Oh, okay.
Oh. Okay, yeah, because I printed out the copy of the application, and I have that information here, so I can provide.
Okay. Do we want to get copies made and table this until we see the copies, or?
I'm comfortable.
Okay.
We've got assurances everything's in there. I think we're fine.
I'm going to vote against this trip and the next trip, because I just feel like $3,300, $3,400, $3,100. This is like an elite, elite group of kids whose families can afford to send them on these trips. These are the only trips that seem to come to us. This is not like, it looks like an amazing trip. I'm sure, like, it's obviously educationally viable, valuable, et cetera, but I just, and I get that it is very expensive to travel to Europe, but I just, I can't keep approving these trips that so few students can go on. My kids couldn't go, and I just think it really puts parents in a tough position, because when my kids go to the high school and they come home and they say, "Mommy, Daddy, there is a school trip, and they're going to France. It's going to be so awesome." And the mommy and daddy in our family is going to say, "Yeah, it does look amazing, and there's no way we can afford to send you." And we will tell that to our children, and that's part of parenting, but I'm ready to see some trips that are accessible to more kids, so, thanks.
Anybody else? Dr. Allison Ampe.
I just, I agree with you that it's expensive, but it's also less expensive than taking the whole family to Europe, and so it can, for that reason, provide an opportunity for some people where they can't afford to do the whole trip, but they can send one kid. But yes, it would be good to have trips that are less expensive and also that have funding for people who can't afford it.
Mr. Hayner.
I agree with Ms. Morgan on this, the fact that this is during non-school time, for it to be brought before us. I see this being done in a private way, and people could do it that way. By having it in the school or connected to the school indirectly through us and stuff, it does, some people are not going to be there. We're not a private school system. We're a public school system, and there should be an avenue for every child to go there. We don't have funding problems. I've been told in the past, it's GoFundMe. There are other ways to raise money and stuff. It hasn't happened. It just hasn't happened in the past, and there are kids that are not able to go.
All right, let me make a comment first. So I agree with what people have said. I mean, I think this is more of a bigger policy question, right? So all we're doing is letting them promote this trip on bulletin boards and through announcements, right? So this is not a school-sponsored trip. It's just allowing them to promote it on school property. So if we want to decide as a policy not to allow that, then I don't know how else people are going to find out, these kids are going to find out about these trips, right? So just as practically speaking, I think, you know, we've decided that we want to be able to review these trips, even though they're not school-sponsored, yet we have a lot of criticisms about it. So I think as a policy question, it would be interesting to see what other school districts do in regard to these private trips and go forward from that. I would definitely be open to having our policies committee look at that.
Did you want to say something, Dr. Bodie?
It is true that the trips are expensive. We are looking to see if there are some other trips that would be within the United States. In fact, we have Model Congress, for example, that's going to be coming up. But I will say that one of the things that I'm working toward is getting scholarship monies. We have, when students have applied for as much as even the entire trip, there is scholarship money that comes out of the International Fund. Phil, that's a very appropriate way to support students in doing these trips. The other thing about it is that we're getting a calendar of trips so that eighth-grade students can see what might be offered during their high school career. You're not going to be able to go on every trip, but there may be some trip that really would be important to you for family reasons or interest. And if you were to see that there was one, it was going to be your junior year, for example, the French Exchange, or going to Japan in the summer, that you could, we want students to be able to take jobs and contribute to this. And I think that a lot of our students do exactly that, that this is something that they want to do, and they get support. So I want also to express my appreciation for the teachers that give up their time to be able to allow our students to have these opportunities, because they can be quite transformational, and it just opens their eyes to the world. The other thing I also want to point out is that something that you have approved is our Global Certificate, that can be on students' transcripts. And one of the ways that students can gain credits toward that certificate is through travel. It's not the only way, and it's not, and you can certainly get the, you get the certificate through other means but this, but it is still a pathway toward that.
Ms. Seuss.
So when I first got on the committee, we had a very extensive discussion on this, and I think the vote has somewhat sailed in terms of the types, offering these types of trips. I agree with everyone, both that it's very expensive, but also with Dr. Allison Ampe, that it might be affordable for a family to send one kid to one trip, you know, once in the career. But in our discussion five years ago, what we came to the understanding was, is that these are, since they're not official school committee, school trips, that our interaction with the trips had to be minimal, and that meant that they could not be promoted in a classroom, for example. And that was our, sort of our agreement that we came to. We also, at that time, looked at ways to establish scholarships, which I know has been done. So there's been a lot of progress on this. I just want to sort of thread that needle carefully so that we would, so that this is something that we announce to our students, but we don't make it appear as if this is somehow related to someone's curriculum or sort of a necessary component to their education. It has to always be seen as separate, and that's why I think it's super important that it not be printed in a classroom.
Anything else? All right, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any abstentions? And opposed? Did you get that? So five, one, one.
No, I apologize. I'm not abstaining.
Oh.
I'm opposing.
Opposed, okay. Five to two.
I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
All right. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next trip is the AHS Science Trip to Germany and Switzerland.
Good evening. My name is Jason G. I'm a science teacher at the high school. And last year, I ran a trip to Panama. We left a year ago tomorrow, or, yeah, a year ago tomorrow, and with EF, and it was a STEM trip as that organization is starting to kind of grow their STEM programs. That trip was definitely transformational for the kids that were on it, and because of it, I was intrigued at exploring what other STEM offerings that they have. This year, when I was planning, I was put a few different offers in front of me, including Galapagos, but what I really wanted to explore was something that was quite different. And usually, when people think science or a science trip, tends to be tropical or something along those lines. And with this one, it's exploring a location that is different from that idea. And what they're going to be looking at is sustainable living, urban design, urban farming, urban planning, and bioreserves in the area of Germany and Switzerland. So it would be a three and a half days in Berlin before traveling south of Germany to Freesberg for a couple of days, followed up by the Lucerne region in Switzerland, where the bioreserve is itself. The time spent in Germany will be looking at, as I said, sustainable design, among other types of urban planning. And what I'm really trying to pull from here is the idea of, we are in a position, kind of in our country, in our region, where we're trying to transform where we live, how we live, with greener technology, with sustainable living, to try to give ourselves a better future and give our kids a better future. So I would like these students to be exposed to ideas in other countries and other places that are taking steps forward. And especially in the upcoming years, as we rebuild the school, I think it's, will be insightful for kids to see how these are applied in other countries and how we're applying them here, and what they can really take away from that. So that is the general gist of what this trip will be offering.
Any questions or comments on this one? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any abstentions? And opposed? Okay, also five to two. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. G.
All right, so next, we have the superintendent's bench.
Well, I want to begin this presentation this evening in thanking everyone who's participated to the point where we are right now, which is a process that began months ago. We've had a lot of discussions within the administration. There's been some discussions at department levels and at the elementary school as well as we go forward, and also with the Budget Subcommittee of this committee. When we talk about a budget for schools, I think it's an opportunity for us to just take a moment to review what our mission is. We don't do that very often, and we begin this budget presentation as putting the mission of the Arlington Public Schools. And, well, I won't read absolutely everything. The last line is really important, that "The Arlington Public Schools are committed to helping every student achieve emotional, social, vocational, and academic success." And to that end, over many years, we've had a multi-tiered system of support, which a lot of our budget tonight is in support of. We've also, over the years, looked at sort of our portrait of a graduate, which is looking at what we want all students to know and be able to do when they graduate from Arlington High School. And we've looked at the knowledge, the positions that are key to, we think, success, both in life and in whatever vocation a student chooses. So we've looked at this as student, as learner, and as student, as global citizen, which is sort of pertains a bit to our discussion earlier this evening. I'm not going to read through all of this, but I do want people to know that this vision is the result of a lot of discussion within the community, within forums that we have, Vision 2020. There was a lot of people involved in it, not to mention all the discussions that went on with respect to the new high school. So as we look at the budget priorities in this year, we're working to achieve this vision for all students. And as I mentioned, we do have a multi-tiered system of support that includes special education services, as well as reading and math interventions, and services, as well as reading and math interventions, and social-emotional support for our students, as well as the work that goes on in our high school guidance department for vocational career and career advice and support. So, but one of the things that has been true in the Arlington Public Schools for many years, and we've talked about this over and over, is the enrollment growth. And we continue to grow as a district. You know, in the last 10 years, we've grown over 1,000 students. And this last year, we grew of 112, then this year another 100, and it's continuing. And so our budget must reflect the needs just to address enrollment increase. So many of the positions that will, are outlined in the budget represent positions needed to address enrollment growth at the different levels. But they also are positions that we are adding to support these tiered levels of, that we, tiered level of support that we've been offering students in math intervention, reading intervention, special education, ELL support. And if I was to say the majority of the budget asked really fall in those, those big, those big buckets, related to enrollment growth is the size of our elementary schools. They have been growing. Some of you on the committee can remember a time when our schools were in the 300s. We have one school in the 300s. All of our schools are in the 400s and two are over 500. And as you do this kind of work that we do in terms of deep dives into data to support decisions that we make, you know, meeting SST, student support meetings, and students with IEPs, the number of meetings have been growing as the number of students grow, that we are finding that we need to have more administrative support at our elementary level. A couple of years ago, we added element, we added administrative support at the high school and adding new dean. And we haven't done, we actually now have three assistant principals at the middle school level, whereas before we had two. So currently, we have four assistant principals, they're part-time. One is not, well, actually, two are not, but that's because they, they fill their position in different, the other part of the position a different way. And so this budget is going to be looking at increasing two more part-time. So basically, those are the big, most of the issues, but to Ms. Leary's question tonight about books and libraries, what you will see is we're, we want to add another librarian's digital literacy specialist. Like, it's, right now, if you've become a librarian, you have that, that kind of certification as well. And, you know, as we increase the books in our library and as also as we, we support students in their reading, this committee's been very supportive of this idea of having a librarian, certified librarian in all of our schools. And in the multi-year plan, we, we keep looking toward how we're going to fulfill that. So this year, we're adding one more. But as far as the books go, that is already in the budget. We didn't call it out because it wasn't an increase, it's already part of, in a sense, the rollover budget from FY '20. So at this point, this is a joint presentation with Mr. Mason and myself, and he's going to talk about just the finances of this, and then we'll come back to the particular ask at each level.
Good evening, School Committee. So, to develop the budget is, takes a lot of time, meetings, coordinating between multiple key stakeholders. And our budget process really starts back in August. We work with the town, which is not on the slide because this is in terms of our operational budget, but we work with the town on the capital planning. And so we do have deadlines for that. Before this meeting, I came from a capital planning committee where it looks like all of our requests are going to be supported by the capital planning committee. But then as a team, we meet in September, starting in September, and those are a series of meetings that happen throughout this process. And where we initially start talking about priorities and how we can try to improve instruction, looking at different data points to try to work on improving achievement gaps. And then later in October, as we meet with the Budget Subcommittee, some of you are part of those, that committee, to lay out the schedule on how we not only report to you guys, but our, the current financials, but how we are intending to roll out the budget. And in addition, we continue to meet with district leadership and administration on, on the budget. In December, you got presentations from the principals and, as well as AEA, providing their requests, which was established part of the schedule. And as well as the school committee, some school committee members and district administration is meeting with long-range planning committee and town governance to determine the budget targets, which then you vote on in January, in the beginning of January, which you guys accepted that number, which we'll discuss tonight. And as well, at around the same time is mid-January, we do get the preliminary governor's budget, where they will inform the town of what we get for state aid, which we did have a couple of changes due to Student Opportunity Act. So, I wanted to start going into the numbers where, this is the funding sources and how it's been structured the last few years, where we're breaking out what the state aid has been, what the town contribution has been, which has been over the required foundation budget. And then how grants revolving funds, which are mainly from fees that are collected for user fees for the buildings or student activities, such as music instrumental program fees. And then circuit breaker, which is another state aid, which is a reimbursement for tuition that hits certain thresholds for out-of-district tuition. So as you see on this, you'll see that, yes, we have been increasing in terms of our investment to the education, so we are committed to that here in Arlington. But on top of that, you'll notice that, yes, the state, the state aid has also been increasing, and has increased about 14% from last prior year. So, these are anticipated revenues, and so in terms of the fiscal '21, for the town appropriation, the town appropriation, once again, that is, that consists of what the town locally contributes from its tax base and what the state provides, which, based on the formula that we have between the long-range, the town and the school department, which includes a growth rate factor of 50% of per pupil DESI average, and 7% increases for general education and special education, we are getting $76,030,0531 in fiscal '21, which is an increase of about 4.6 million or 6.44%, which is great that we're able to do that this year. Grants are hard to project, they've been trending downward, so we level fund grants. Sometimes we do get increases of grants, so we'll wait and adjust when we get those final numbers. The circuit breaker, we're actually spelling out because due to all the great work that we're doing, bringing in, bringing back our students, in some cases to be able to provide more services in district, that means that we're not paying out as much out-of-district tuition, which are not meeting those thresholds to get reimbursed, so we're seeing an actual reduction in circuit breaker. And that, this circuit breaker revenue actually comes this year, so we do have a cushion where we're, the money that we collect this year will be used to, and applied for next year. And so that's a reduction of $377,000. And our total revolving and other reimbursements were actually increasing from 1.4 million to 2.1 million this year. And part of that is to offset, to try to remain committed to special education, to maintain our local maintenance of effort. So we're increasing, we have a revolving fund that we use for tuitions that we collect, for services that we provide for out-of students that are not from Arlington. And we're going to use that towards special education to offset the loss in the circuit breaker. And then, and on top of that, we are going to increase the use of the building rental fees to keep up with the cost of utilities. We wanted to do this in a phased manner, we didn't want to just shock the operations budget and not be able to do some of the proposed additions. So we're doing $250,000 of increased spending over what we normally do on building rentals facilities. And as well as, we're doing additional $175,000 on foreign exchange tuition to support curriculum materials and professional development, to support stronger instructional support for our students. So the total grand change in funding is $4.9 million, which is about 6.34%. Everybody kept up so far? All right, great. So, this chart we normally get, and this is a chart shows, which shows the obvious, town appropriation is most of the dollars. But what it doesn't show is the, the portion that we, we don't see is, there's a state aid portion, which is about 19%. So about 22% of our money is from the state, 72% is locally contributed, and 3% comes from grants, which can be not as predictable, and another 3% that's been pretty steady has been from revolving. And then we take the same 82 million total budget, and we break it out into the voting categories. So as you, as you may know, is that we break out our, the budget transfer categories that the school committee limits our, our budget on, based on administration, curriculum instruction, elementary, education, grants. The other category, which includes facilities, transportation for regular education, as well as information technology and other indirect services, secondary education for the high school and middle schools, and special education. Special education is what we are largely budgeting for, is the largest, followed by secondary, and then elementary education. As some of you may know, Arlington has a town manager 12 that compares to similar towns that meet certain criteria. And once again, not much has changed, we're still in the middle of the pack on the per pupil spending, according to the latest data that's available for fiscal '18 per pupil expenditures, just to get an idea where we're at. And maybe some of the movements that we're doing will help us, but we'll see how that plays out in the future years. But to recap, our, once again, the total net increase is $4.9 million for all funds, not just the town appropriation, that's town appropriation, revolving funds and grants. And, you know, it would be nice to use that all for ads, but there are certain things that we have to do, right? So off the top, we do have to take $2.6 million for contractual salary increases, non-union salary increases, and bargaining unit increases such as the teachers. As well as, we were spelled out in the budget as, we're dedicating, we're making dedicated art and music budget supply. So instead of increasing principal supply budgets and leaving it at the discretion of the principals, we wanted to make sure that we're providing equitable programs for art and music across the district, where we're allocating it per, on a per pupil basis based on enrollment through the district, as well as additional funding for some information technology increases in software that will be implemented district-wide. The $175,000 that I've already previously discussed, that's going to be coming out of foreign exchange, which is for the additional curriculum materials and professional development to help improve instruction. And then the increasing utilities on both the town appropriation, which is a little bit over $200,000, and $250,000 dedicated to, I'm sorry, over about $300,000 increase of utilities on the town appropriation fund, and $250,000 that will be focused on the revolving fund. And to, I want to be clear that, the, the use of the revolving fund is not necessarily an increase in collection of fees, is that we benefited with some balances that we, we need to spend down, so that we're going to be increasing the spending out of those accounts. As well as, you know, that we're going to be getting a new high school, and so the high school project will be starting in a few weeks, just starting, breaking grounds. So when, when it starts getting really busy out here, we wanted to remove the preschool from this, this area, this operation, and have it's a dedicated location at the parmenter school. But with that, there is operational costs that are mainly tied to facilities. There would be an increasing of a custodian to service that building, to help with snow removal, cleaning services, any issues that happen on site. It will also include any utility costs for that building, which is, you know, it uses oil heat, is not anything that's more modern or efficient. And so, we estimate about $180,000 just to build into the operational budget for that program, for those programs. And then, in order to be able to meet and serve the needs of the students that are coming in district, or that, as the growing population, or the students that have special needs in, in district, we're reallocating tuition that was normally for out-of-district placement to, to some of these ads. And so the total availability for ads this year is $1.6 million. And I'm going to leave it to Dr. Bodie to continue that discussion.
Yeah. You have the elementary up there. Some of the, you see part, you see .5s and .2s. Oftentimes, in these, in these proposals, this is moving someone to a full-time position in order to, to meet the needs there. For example, in the math coach, that, again, one of the things that we've been able to do over the last few years is move toward dedicated math coaches at the elementary level, but that doesn't mean that they're full-time. And so this .5 actually sort of spread out in a bit, in order to create, to create more time availability of the coaches for teachers. Another one here is the math interventionist. We're going to be able to actually make it a whole, but from, you know, from, by reducing something else in the budget in order to make up the .3. But right now, we have four, four schools have some level of math intervention. So the math interventionist works directly with students, a math coach supports the teachers in their instruction. And what this is going to do is allow us to have every school have some level of math intervention support for, you know, in their tiered level of support approach. We also, this, this English language learner teacher, actually, we've already hired this person in the last month, so the FY '21 budget needs to reflect that salary because it is not in the, the base budget. And then, as, again, as our number of students with IEPs increases, this halftime team chair is for Thompson, which has our largest number of students with IEPs. The inclusion reading teachers, this is, this is going to be a very helpful addition to the work that we're doing with early literacy. As you know, this year, we had a schedule, we were able to change our schedule, that allows for, at each grade level, that you could be teach, you could have English language, your reading program, foundations, just your ELA program at the same time, same thing for math. The advantage of that is that it gives the opportunity to be able to have specialists come in and do push-in, work with flexible groups, flexible groups within, across the whole grade. But right now, in order to service the reading needs, we don't have enough reading teachers to both do the tier two and tier three pullouts and be able to do some push-in. So this is going to allow us to be able to do, do that. The principals, when they were here in December, talked about this, but they have really gotten down to exactly what they feel they need for next year. As we move to the middle school, virtually everything in this is due to enrollment growth. Right now, what's, what's going to happen next year is that the seventh grade at the middle school is going to increase roughly about 50 students. The students that are in the sixth grade currently have close to 490 students, we expect that's going to go up a little bit. But we have five learning communities at Gibbs. At, at Odison, we have four in the seventh grade, and so we're going to increase 50 students. So the proposal by the principal, a very conservative approach, is just to add a half So proposal by the principal, a very conservative approach, is just to add a half learning community, which we have done in the past. It means that the two teachers in that learning community are duly certified. There is also a need for more, another special education teacher, and again, with our, our tiered level of support, we have math support both at Gibbs and at Odysseum, and that's increasing those positions to full-time. And then the Spanish teacher at Gibbs and Odysseum, again, is enrollment growth and class size. Same thing with physical education teacher. When we move to the high school, pretty much all of this is enrollment-driven as well. I, I think the high school would like to actually have more, more FTEs in this, but as we balance all the different needs of the district, this is what we feel that we can offer next year. This would meet their base needs going into the next year. And as you can see, some of it is, again, in special education and as well as we need to have another ELL teacher. One of the things that we're seeing happening more is that we are having students coming in that are immigrating or, or having interrupted education so that they are coming in at levels that doesn't even match our intervention classes. So we are creating more opportunities for these very small group interventions. That's what you're seeing at the, the middle and the high school. At the district level, we're putting in three reserve positions as we've been doing the last couple of years and hoping, but it, it looks like we may be, we potentially might need teachers at two elementary schools, but we'll have to wait and see on that. This next one, social-emotional, I'll be really honest with you, this is really a placeholder of money for position that we haven't, we haven't completely defined, but we know that we need. As you, as you've had a, aware of the lab report, require, has a lot of suggestions that are general ed suggestions, really more than special ed, and, you know, getting consistency in our SST process, but we also need more support with social-emotional learning and how we set up the cultures in different schools. So we are working on what that is going to look like, and before we actually ask you to vote on the budget, we'll give you something, a little bit more of a recommendation specifically what we're looking for, and it may involve a job description that will need to be approved. And then we talked about the librarian, this is where it is, is at the district, district position, even though the intent is that that position will probably be servicing only elementary schools. And then again, we're, we've talked in the past about one way to increase our physical therapy support is actually to use a therapy assistant, and that's, we have had requests both from teachers as well as principals to have more support, behavioral support, and that's what the BCBA request is. We also need another bus driver to transport special education students. This is, this has been needed just by the way we've been shifting the preschool department and change in start times. When our director of transportation looked at all the runs, he couldn't do it with our existing, our existing staff. And then we are also increasing our behavior support personnel at the, in our special programs. So this is sort of a, a look at where we are. Again, you can see this is enrollment-driven, it is also tiered support-driven, as well as some, some vision of what we want, where we want to move over the next five years. So that concludes our report, except that the major dates that are coming up, we're going to be having the public hearing on the budget at your next meeting, the 27th, and we need to have a vote on the budget from you by March, on the March 12th meeting because we, we took basically the last time that we could present at the finance committee, which is March 23rd, and then we go to town meeting. All right. That's it.
What time is it, March 23rd?
Uh, March, probably 7:30. We'll get a firm time.
They start at seven, I think.
Seven?
Seven. Do you want to talk now about the Student Opportunity Act?
Sure.
In relation to the budget?
Yes. The Student Opportunity Act is an act by the legislature that you're all aware of that provides additional money to support really a multi-tiered system of support, really targeting our students that are not achieving at the same level as our aggregate, or most of our students. And we have identified what those groups are. In fact, we had a presentation about that in the fall when we looked at our MCAS data. But our MCAS data isn't the only data that we look at in terms of knowing which students need more, more support. So when the, in the governor's budget, the amount of money that Arlington will receive is $2 million. But what you, what the public needs to understand, I know that you know this, the money comes into the town in chapter 70 and then becomes part of the general appropriation to the schools, which we have agreed in terms of a formula in how that money is distributed. The Department of Education and the state legislature are requiring plans for how the $2 million would be spent in, in support of our students that have been struggling more than, are not achieving the same level as the majority of our students. But the Department of Education also recognizes is that districts have been doing this work and that you're not starting from scratch, and we're not. So 1.5 million dollars of that can be identified in terms of ongoing efforts. And there are certain commitments you need to make and decide where the focus of your, of your energies and monies are going to be directed at. For Arlington, it's, it's what we've been doing. We're looking, as you know, at early literacy, and that's a goal. We're, we're looking at professional development, both in content and in pedagogy and in cultural competencies, because the social-emotional environment in which students learn is, has a profound effect on their learning, and the state recognizes that, as does the legislature. There are even suggestions at how you can change your schedule to create more planning time for teachers in this effort, which is exactly what we did this year. And so the monies that were, we used to do that can also become part of our ongoing efforts. So we, this plan to the Department of Education is required to be submitted by April 1st, in fact, for six o'clock, I think, on April 1st, and you, as a school committee, also need to approve the plan and be involved in the planning of this. So we're sort of on an accelerated planning schedule in that we're going to be reaching out to our teachers, reaching out to the public, and, and because that's part of the requirements is to have input into what we're, into our plan. And of course, the work we did in the five-year plan really is part of this. That was definitely an outreach to people in terms of what we're looking to achieve over the next five years. So we, we, we actually are, as, as this is unfolding, and I'm learning more about it, we are actually in a very good position in terms of what we've been doing, what we're planning to do, and the outreach we've already done, and we can do more outreach over the next few weeks. So we're working on the basic, the basics of it, we'll be coming back to you in, in the subcommittee and with the goal of moving toward your last meeting in March for approval of the plan. But I, I think you already can see where this, where this plan is, and it's, it's a question of how we, you know, just articulate it. They're looking for brevity, not long narratives, which is good. Of course, they have 300 and some to read, so, and comment on, so that's probably part of it. But they have a very strict format. They're going to send us templates mid-March that we fill out, so it's a, it's a very structured plan, planning process.
And the takeaway at the budget subcommittee meeting was that there probably won't need to be any adjustments made to the budget as a result of the SOA plan. Obviously, that's not finalized yet, we have to go through public participation and all that, but as of now, it's not looking like we'll need to modify the budget to adapt to the, the initiatives that we're thinking of putting in the SOA plan. Right, Mr. Sutman?
Okay. On the SOA plan, to begin with, the state said there was a threshold of 1.5 million dollars, any community that was above 1.5 had to do the long form, anyone below 1.5 had short form. Now, most districts in the state got a $30 per pupil increase, we got significantly more. The reason why we got that was not because of the needs of our populations, because the chapter 70 formula caps the minimum local contribution so that the increasing enrollment is what's generating the additional chapter 70 funds and putting us in, in this category. I'm on the AAC, and we've talked about this, the state, Desi is, was kind of surprised that the legislature is requiring this plan the first year of implementation, given that the chapter 70 money was first announced in the governor's budget late January, and the, and Desi didn't really have an infrastructure for playing with this as well. And I think that Commissioner Riley seems to be a reasonable guy who wants to have school departments and school committees doing good work for kids rather than generating paperwork and bureaucracy. So that, that's sort of the context of this. Getting off SOA and into the budget, if I can hit a couple of questions. Starting at page 12 of the budget book, all the revolving fees and reimbursements are budgeted numbers. Do we have actuals around here someplace?
Actuals for, for the actual expenditures?
For the revolving, for example, the athletic fees have steady $260,000 across the five years. I'm sure that we weren't taking in exactly $260,000 each of those five years.
Correct.
Yeah, so the actuals, I-
So, well, these were budgeted funding, this is not necessarily expenditures, so this is terms of revenue, so, I mean, we don't show the actual revenues in this particular schedule, it has never been shown as such, so we kept it as the way it was. Would you like to see that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the actuals, I'd like to know what we're dealing with here. Because if we're putting the same number in the budget every year, I don't know if we're really close or far apart, or, you know, you're, you're asking us to approve the budgetary number without have, seeing the, the track record over the years.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And seeing that, you know, we're talking about $260,000 worth of athletic fees, which the community is involved in, plus or minus what the actual is, you know, that's something that people talk to us about, quite a bit, actually, and I'd like to see how that lines up. Secondly, while we're on athletics, could we, for, before we adopt the budget, get a cost estimate for adding a ski team?
I think that the proponents of it have, you can say what the number was, but one of the things that Mr. Macy and I talked about the other day is that there's other costs that are not represented. For example, if we're, if this is going to be a public school sport and a student can't afford skis, do we say you can't be on the team because you don't have skis? Now, in some sports, people do, for example, hockey, they usually buy their own stick, but we do provide sticks when a student cannot afford it. There are things that we're just part of the uniform, we pay for. What would that be, the helmets? I mean, there are things that need to be thought about, so while there was an estimate, I don't think that is the accurate estimate of cost.
Well, that's why I want our number.
I don't, I don't, I can't give you one right now.
No, I don't, I don't expect one right now, but I'd like, like to see one between now and the time we adopt the budget. Because when I hear that we have a couple of kids who would have qualified for the state, but we couldn't send them because we're not a, not a team or a club, I think we're taking an opportunity away from kids, and if we're that good, we should make it a team. This is a masterful document, I think this is a very well-done budget. My other question is, because it was raised out front, I think it's a reasonable question, do we have set-asides for library books in the budget?
Correct. So that was an add last year, so we wouldn't put it, unless we're increasing above that amount that we were allocating, it's not being spelled out because of that reason, it's already built into the budget.
So it's somewheres buried in the materials and supplies?
Correct. Once again, in the curriculum and materials, we usually use for the one-time purchases on the revolving funds, that's where they're coming out of. So we did the same thing this year, we'll do the same thing again in fiscal '21.
So if we set it, the, the library books aside as a line item, there'd be sort of an expectation that that would be spent on library books as opposed to other books?
Correct.
What would come back to us as an assurance that some of the town money is going to buy books to libraries? How do we know that?
Well, basically, you would get that information when we report on the end-of-year report. So there is a line section that we report for end of year, and it would actually be reflected under our revolving funds where we're funding that. So when we, when I, when I do report on the fiscal '20 expenditures, you would see it there. And I'd like to comment, I mean, in terms of the logistics, to clear up, that we are actually in the process of ordering, I think that when you're putting all the purchases of the district over a certain amount, you have $5,000 per school, it hurts certain thresholds, so it does take time to actually put it out to vendors, to actually look at things for three quotes, to make sure we're getting the best pricing and we're following the procurement laws, and so that's where we're at, just to give update. So hopefully, those orders will be placed shortly.
I understand those complications as a school person, but, you know, the one thing I'd like somehow during the process of either the budget process or during the school year is some sort of acknowledgement of money that we're putting into this, because for so many years, we didn't, and, and I think this is something we should be celebrating, even for 30 seconds in one page or one place in the budget, because I, I, I think we could be proud of this.
And if I could say, I will, I will notify you on the, when the monthly reports show that actual expenditure.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Can I have a, a comment to that?
Sure.
I, I think we're, we're definitely moving forward with it. It's different when PTOs buy books.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's outside, yeah.
But another part of this, which is, is, our, our new librarian has been very helpful. We're trying to do audits of the different libraries, and our vendor has been helping us with that, so that there's also the issue of equity of opportunity, of what is available. And so you might have some schools which have purchased a lot of books in one particular area, but not in another, and so we're trying to use the money that's coming from the district to create equity among our libraries. And I think it's going to take a couple of years to do, well, several years to do that, but that's, that's the effort going forward.
I, I very much appreciate that.
Ms. Seuss?
So, yeah, on librarians and library books as well. So I, I do think it makes sense to just call it out in this budget, just because it's so new and there were snafus, and you just say, we are continuing to do this, and in subsequent years, you don't have to, but it just, it's helpful, I think, to the community. So in terms of equity then, is then, are we going to have a minimum distribution of $5,000 per school, but then for the schools that have a depth, you know, are, are not as well-stocked, they get more, or do some schools get less?
It's what they, it's what they use the $5,000 to purchase.
Okay, because there are some schools that are in much better shape than others.
Correct.
And I have to say, it used to be Thompson that was in the worst shape, and with the amazing generosity of the town and of Elaine Shea and, and that family, that looks fabulous, right? So, so Hardy is now the next sort of school that's sort of in, in the worst shape, I think. So we might want to look at, at one-time expenses at some point. When we've, you know, added librarians, we've been thoughtful about the collection, I think it's helpful to, to maybe sort of look at equity across the district among schools.
Because there may be beginning in equities, yes.
Some schools are just a lot better funded than other schools. Historically, their PTOs pay a lot more money, and they've just spent, you know, some, some PTOs raise three times as much as other PTOs, and that's just what we've seen. Actually, I have a question, though, also, the librarian, how is this librarian going to be used? Are they sort of, are the two librarians at the elementary level working together? Or is one going to be more specialized for middle school level?
Well, the current librarian also has a teaching assignment.
Well, the current librarian also has a teaching assignment, as does the new digital literacy. One of the ways that we are able to do this common planning time, which at each one of the elementary schools, is to be able to have coverage of the classes.
So, the new librarian will do that as well?
Right. We would have to figure out what that different schedule would be, so there'd be more free up a little bit. We'll figure out whether, you know, we assign four schools, which is what we did initially with coaches. We had four, and then the other three. One of the issues, we may, we may need to assign some to the middle school. While the issue of increasing librarians is another aspect to this that we've become educated about, and that has to do with our databases. And in order to have these databases available to all of our schools free, is that you have to have, you have to have a .2 certified librarian for each school. So, by adding a 1.0, it's actually .2 more than we need, but we weren't going to quibble on that, in order that then all of our schools would fit the criteria for having these free databases.
Okay, so there's going to be instruction at all of the schools, it sounds like?
There has been instruction at all the schools, and the more support we have, the more, they might even be able to get into classrooms and, this is not affecting our paras. Our paras are doing a great job, but there are a lot of things that we need to do. We were just talking about library books, just looking at the collections and figuring out where are some holes that we need to have, fill, I should say.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Hayner?
I'd like to commend you and the complete staff. I think it's a wonderful book. That being said, page five, the second to last line.
Page five?
It's on the facts and figures.
Oh, yes.
The teacher-student ratio in the past, when this was published, I've asked for at least, I'd ask for it to explain that you take the student population and divide by all licensed people. That would include Mr. Mason, the superintendent, the nurse, to get the, we do not have classrooms of 14 to 1 on an average throughout the district. This is the way Desi's been doing it. It's just, to me, very misleading. And I've asked in the past, I'd like to see an asterisk put there, just to explain where this comes from, so people realize that we do not have classes of this size and the teachers are underworked and overpaid. That's all. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you, Jeff. All people need the help, all the help we can get.
We all do.
Dr. Allison Ampi?
Okay, so I have a couple comments and then some questions. First, regarding the SOA, the other thing that came up at Budget Subcommittee was that we were making, ensuring that the SOA requirements could be fulfilled within the current town allocation, which, when we were first hearing about the change, you know, the expectations and how much we were getting, was at least, to me, a little bit of a concern, but they can, and so that's great. And the clarification that I want to make, while I appreciate the chart that you have that shows the Chapter 70 amount, people need to understand that in Arlington, the Chapter 70 does not come directly to the schools. And so, any increases, such as I was just speaking about where we're, the Chapter 70 coming to the town is increasing by almost $2 million this year, does not correlate to an increase in our budget of that amount. I'm a little concerned that that chart kind of makes people maybe think that, or, I think it'd be good to have something in there, just making it very clear that this is sort of of intellectual interest, but really, all the money comes into the town and then the town portions it out. And the advantage of doing that is, one, it gives us stability over multiple years of knowing what our funding is. And, two, if Chapter 70 goes down, as it has in the past, the town has made up our difference. Whereas, if we were writing the Chapter 70, we would have been doing this.
Right.
Okay, so now my questions. First, I'm a little confused about the librarians. I had thought, just the general.
Idea?
Yeah. I had thought from last year's discussion on, about the five-year plan and stuff, that we were talking about adding combination librarian, digital literacy specialists. And so, this is listed as a librarian, or does media specialist mean digital, do you see what I'm saying? I'm confused what we're adding, you know, what we had talked about, and then what we're actually adding.
We're adding a librarian with digital literacy skills.
Okay.
And that's how the job description is.
Okay, that's.
For the position, and we want that, too. And in fact, anybody who's coming out of that certification today has all of that. One of the things we found last year is because we were so late in advertising, we really did not find the second person we thought we would have, but we really needed a person to help with all the teaching that we were going to do this year to, you know, for the planning block. So, we did hire a digital media specialist. That person is not a librarian, but still a needed skill. What we think with hiring a librarian is we get a two-fer.
Right. I guess I'm just thinking, it'd be good to put that in the description when we're talking about it so that people understand, because I think it's something that parents are interested in.
Okay.
In understanding that we are covering those bases, too. Then, on page 10 of the budget book, the paragraph that starts, or, it talks about, the first paragraph, I think, has some errors in it, and we can talk about this offline. There's, I can't explain on camera, but that should, we should probably get that fixed. Then on page 17, there's a statement that says, enrollment growth means that, it's explaining why we were adding some of the things. It's a footnote. It says, enrollment growth means that Arlington is no longer considered a low-incidence ELL district. And I'm confused by that statement because enrollment growth in, if the incidence stays the same, yeah, if the percentage.
Relative percentages you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm saying that the percentage shouldn't be changing. Now, it may be that it's changing, but that's.
It could, I think.
It's two different things.
I'll double-check that, but I think it has to do with the number of students you have, but I'll double-check that.
Okay, so it may just be the actual, so, low incidence really means number of students, not percentage, because.
Yeah, the number of students needing special ELL services has increased, but what has also increased is much, I shouldn't say as much, but both things are going on, the number of students as well as the needs of these students.
Okay. And then finally, one last comment. I just wanted to call out to everyone who's watching us, that this budget book is now being really put into the format from ASBO, which is based on the meritorious budget, and it has a different look, it has a different feel. It's not, you know, this is our first, this is our next big move towards improving the budget book, and I think it does, I like it. It's professional, it looks, you know, there's some things to start tidying up, but I think it was a big, it's a big change, and I think it's definitely towards a positive. And I commend you all for doing the work to make it possible.
Give a lot of credit to Mr. Mason on this.
Ms. Morgan?
I think it's beautiful. I think that the slides in the book talk to each other, and that fills me with joy and love. It does. No, like, I do. It makes me feel so happy. I love that I can look at this ad here, and it has a number in the row, and then I can move forward and read the narrative about that particular edition. And so, I really appreciate it. I think that a couple of the pie charts in the presentation speak to Dr. Allison Ampi's concern, and I do, I think it's really tricky, this whole, like, relationship between Chapter 70 and the town appropriation. And we're getting there, it feels close, and these two pie charts, and it's really, really, we're really close to being able to talk about it spot-on. So, I think that that's exciting, and I do think that that's important. So, anyway, thank you.
Ma'am?
Sure.
In the long-range planning spreadsheet that we have, it actually, Chapter 70 is called out. So, what that means is that if Chapter 70 goes up, some other monies can be either put off into the stabilization account, and that's to the point of stability, which I think Arlington has done an amazingly good job. In fact, people reach out to find out what Arlington does about this, because it has done such a great job in terms of stabilizing budgets.
Ms. Elmer?
So, my, great job on this. It really is a big step forward. Is there anything that we committed to do in the operating override that we're not doing anything? And, I mean, maybe, I mean, is, you know that, Lynn, or if there's anything that we're, anything we're not able to do in this?
So, I mean, we didn't really commit to anything.
I know that. I understand that.
There's some positions that aren't funded.
So, if you look at the five-year plan, if you use that as the measure.
Yes, that's what I meant.
I mean, partly is, we don't have enough funds to cover everything, so we're doing everything slow, more slowly. You know, the one major item that Ms. Morgan pointed out is that there was funding in the plan for additional staffing in our SLC programs. And as Ms. Elmer said at the last meeting, the enrollment growth has not occurred there, so that has not been needed yet, so that's still not funded. There are other special education positions that are being funded, just not in the SLC programs. That's really the main thing that I think sticks out. I don't know how much we've been increasing curriculum expenses. It doesn't, it's not clear to me that there is an increase in curriculum expenses, other than the art and music item. That was going to be one of my questions, but, so.
I mean, I think this may be, this is, it could be a question that'll come up at the time. Somebody wants, somebody asked me this, and I said, you know, you got us Len Carden, that girl, no.
Well, let me piggyback on a comment that you made, in that, yes, our SLC is not necessarily going to, as you can see, the success we're having out of district. And honestly, I really want to credit our teachers in the district, who are doing so much, you know, are really reaching out to a much more inclusive environment. But also, the money that we've been putting in every year, iteratively more into interventions, math support, coaching, reading, all of these things are now really starting to show. And you're seeing it, and we first were going, wow, this is, because we actually looked at the numbers, we went, wow, this is really a change. And now, it's a sustained change for two years. Now, one of the things that we haven't done, because we've been very purist about what considers special education increases, that we've had this category of intervention. In fact, we've done that graph before, we just didn't put it in here, as to how much we spend on interventions. And every year, that percent goes up, and we are, we really are seeing the effects. And so, we're definitely on the right track of what needs to be done. And in fact, when I saw the, what they call the 17 evidence-based programs the Department of Education was touting as districts to do, when I read them, I went, we're doing it. That's exactly what we've been doing iteratively. And I think that you sometimes can't see it in a given year, you only see it over time. And that's what we're seeing in the numbers right now.
Ms. Seuss?
So, actually, that was going to be a question about, so I know for a few years, we did have in the pie chart, this little slice that said, these were the intervention money. And so, you could see that even though we weren't spending as much on special education as we had historically, there was a clear visual sort of explanation for that. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to do that, or if it makes sense to do it as a bar graph as ever-increasing numbers, or per pupil, or, I wonder if there's just some way to convey that to the public.
Yeah, we'll try to work on a visual aspect that is easily to explain.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, because I mean, that was part of our story, so it'd be, it'd be like, not great to drop it, because if we can convey that information. And then I have a question. So, I sit on the wellness committee, and I know that the way our budget process works, we often don't hear from nursing staff. And I know a couple of years ago, we heard sort of late, like, oh, my goodness, we didn't, like, realize that the timing of the budget requests, and, you know, really, the numbers are getting such that we really need additional nursing. And I know that in this budget, there isn't any. And so, the question is, is that okay? Can we sort of slide by with the increases? I know we have, you know, ever-increasing needs of individual students, as well as just the sheer number of students are growing.
That was a request. And we also have to understand, this is a blueprint, and when needs come up, we try to figure out how to staff when we, for example, the ELL teacher we had to staff this year at Stratton, I think our nursing staff is a little stretched. It's true. And I think here at the high school, when the preschool goes to Parmeter, that nursing position is going to go. And so, we've been staffing it, too, in the clinic. We also have, I can talk more about this at another time, but we also have another opportunity to get some resources through some grants. And so, we're looking at that as well. But yes, I think that that is an issue. Now, you put this in perspective, though, we still have districts in this Commonwealth that do not have a nurse per school. We have, there are schools that do not have a social worker in every school. And this is something that as a district and as a community, we have prioritized. And we do have that. In fact, we, even at the elementary now, we have sometimes more than one social worker. So, we have been investing in this. And if we find that we need to have more nursing, we'll figure out how to do it within this.
All right, my turn, I guess. So, again, yes, congratulations on the revised presentation. It's a lot of good stuff. I guess as a process matter, I mean, often we have feedback and things sort of get appended to the budget. But I think after our hearing at our next meeting, it might be useful to actually revise this document and republish it before our March meeting with our input, and that just, you know, if people agree, nodding their heads, okay.
May get binders in, though.
Okay, we don't have to actually print it for us, but just republish it. So, and then things I noted was to add the library books. So, I think, you know, we are reflecting spending out of the revolving funds, and so, we didn't discuss the books in our budget last year. So, even though we funded it, it wasn't discussed. So, it would be useful to call that out somewhere.
Okay.
And include that money somewhere, even if it's being funded out of those revolving funds. And the interventions chart, adding that, if you can put that together, would be good. So, I had a couple of questions. So, the team chair, I certainly am supportive of reducing workloads, but based on the numbers from the state, which are older, there are actually more students at Stratton than at Thompson. Has that changed, or?
Yeah, I think, sorry. The numbers that we pulled live from, in November, I think was the last time we pulled them, had it higher at Thompson.
Okay, because there was 91 at Stratton, because the SLC is there with 30 kids, and 77 at Thompson.
Yeah, and they have an additional, I don't have the exact numbers in my office for what that currently is as of November, because those would have been October 10 numbers that were, and just frankly, the numbers that the state have don't always match up with what we have locally, when we pull it directly from EZIAP, which is our software for tracking IEPs. They're close, they're definitely, those are the two largest. We also have the full-time assistant principal over at Stratton, which part of that .5
five Dr. Bodie mentioned is for special ed support.
Okay. And then for Mr. Spiegel, on our bus drivers, it doesn't look like the contract requires them to be full-time, right? So, so, so why is this a full-time position if they're just doing runs in the morning and the afternoon? Do we have to have them work full-time?
I don't know. I'd have to ask our transportation director. But our bus drivers who do runs in the morning don't just, that's not all they do during the day. They, they do, besides transporting students in the morning and the afternoon, they make deliveries between buildings, they work on the buses and, and
Field trips.
And the field trips. And yeah, so the field trips are a big thing, too, that we tend, we'd like to use our own buses and our own bus drivers, if we can, for field trips rather than going out. So the decision has been made. We've had full-time bus drivers here in the district who work the full year as well.
I will say that hiring a bus driver is getting to be very challenging.
I'm not sure if this one is a, if he wants this one to be full year, or just the?
I think he only wants it to be the school year.
He, he did, he did say that he would prefer, if it could be full year, but if he couldn't be approved as not full year, it'd be a ten-month job. And that was the, the request.
Okay. And then on the, the art supplies and performing arts supplies. So certainly with art supplies, you know, there's actually materials, you see it on the walls here. What, what does a performing arts supplies budget cover? What kind of materials?
So, yeah, I mean, it would, I mean, my understanding was, there is some consumable materials that they do use, but there's also equipment that they would use in classrooms that are district-wide. And yeah, by nature, it may not seem as though the expense is not as consumable as arts, but they're more expensive. It's not necessarily something that you would have to phase out each year to purchase to keep the operations going. So one school might get something one year, another school may get something another year, based on the cost of equipment. And then you would create a rotating cycle, because you would eventually replace that equipment on a, on a rotating basis to keep everything fresh.
Okay, great. And then finally, the last question. On curriculum, so that was, that's the one item that sort of was in the, in the five-year plan, that we don't necessarily, not called out, but maybe we're increasing, increasing it otherwise. But, so, well, I guess there's sixty thousand in here, one thirty. So is this actually more materials that we're purchasing, or?
Yeah. So it's a ver, it's a variety of, between curriculum, like textbooks, and additional instructional materials that could be to strengthening our instruction inside the classroom. In addition to, it's not just curriculum materials that we're doing. We're also looking at different types of professional development to help improve instruction. We do have a list of that. I mean, we can disclose that list. It was something that was separate, that we know that we can't fund all the requests that are on our list. But when it's finalized, we can also disclose that with the school committee.
Great. And I'm just noticing that the, now the numbers actually don't line up. So there's thirty-one items in the list.
So I'm gonna explain that. So if you look at that total number, that total number is the net change on the town appropriation. All right? So if you look at the total change on that, it's four point six.
Yeah.
As you notice that, our total change is four point nine. And so part of that, the funding additions are supported through revolving. And we do not call out the revolving adjustments on that particular list.
Oh, right, right, right. But, but the table lists thirty-one items, right? But then in the narrative, something's just wrong. I'm just noticing this now. I don't quite know what's wrong. But then the narrative was thirty-two items.
Okay. Maybe there's something that's extra that needs to be removed, that we decided. But that, thank you for noticing that. I'll adjust that and update on the digital document.
All right. Anything else? Dr. Allison Ampey?
I had two quick questions, both on page twenty-six. First, line six, seven hundred, curriculum and instruction leadership. There's an increase, and I was just wondering what that's for. Page twenty-six. It's the first, it's the first one of all the curriculum instruction CNI.
I can get back to you, Kersey, on that. I believe that would be tied to possibly some professional development. But I will definitely get back to you on that question. Okay?
And then on the same page, line sixty-eight, fifty-four, the special education summer program, that is funded at greatly reduced amount. And I'm wondering how come?
Fifty-four?
All right. Look at that reduction as well.
Those aren't the summer, that's not ESY.
Yeah, it's probably how it's coded in UNIS and our financial system. And that's as a program code, but that's probably the reduction of tuition. But I will confirm for you, because there's a lot of moving parts here.
So the tuitions will come up in the summer program?
No, it's not our ESY program. It's our students who attend out-of-district placements. And there's usually a separate, they separate out the summer tuition.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's like paying for summer camp.
Yeah. I'm assuming that's, I mean, that's not our ESY budget. So I, I don't know the number.
We might have reduced the wrong tuition line item to, to, to accommodate to, to the additions that we were talking about, to reallocate special education funding.
Okay. But there's not like some major district initiative to shut down a summer, I mean, a summer, which is what it would look like.
But thank you for spotting that out. Yes, I will look into it to make sure it's the right line.
And we'll have a chance to go over, we, we just got this on Sunday. So we'll have a chance to go over this again at our next meeting, after the budget hearing. All right, anything else? All right, great. Onto the monthly financial reports. Mr. Mason again.
So, yeah, I was not at the last meeting, due to a person was reading things. So sorry about that. But once again, these are your standard monthly reports. This was for the month ending in December, the last calendar month of two thousand nineteen. And this report is showing that we currently have, as of that period, a surplus of four hundred and fifteen thousand. And similar to last year, it's mainly driven by special education out-of-district tuition. So we'll be looking at probably setting some money aside for reserves, just in case in the future as well, again, as we did last year. Once again, you also have the grant accounts report. We're drawing down funds as we normally should. So you'll see that some funds do not have necessary revenue drawn. They just have the ten percent that they're giving upfront, because some expenses are later in the year that occur. But as expenses occur, we then draw down funds for grants. And all of revolving accounts are in balance and going as planned currently. If there's any questions that you had after reviewing the report from last meeting, I'd try to answer some if I know the answers right now. Otherwise, I would get back to you as well.
Any questions on the monthly reports? All right, great. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I have a few things. I'll try not to keep your, keep your, keep it going strong for your, let me begin with the high school. If you could just put that up. We're moving into a period of time where you're gonna start seeing things. It's going, it's going to be happening. This is the diagram for, there's different months as we go forward. We are entering the, we've been in it frankly, for the last, all the, for all the meetings we've had, in the pre-construction time. So there's a lot of things that have to happen before you can actually begin construction, which will not really officially happen until probably around October one next year, in that vicinity. But in the, in this process of beginning this, we need to, over the next month or two, figure out where people are gonna park. So one of the things that's going to happen when we get into March is that the, the basketball area in the back is going to be paved, well, it is paved, but it's going to be put in a way with the fencing and line, line item, putting numbers on spots. This is going to be the temporary parking for the parking that's eventually going to be eliminated in front of the school and also along Mass Ave. So over, the basketball is one of the big issues of, that's gonna be going on. Another thing that's already starting, we, we've been having people come look at this, is doing trial borings for the geothermal wells. And there's going to be one that's done over in the practice field. That's the one that's over by DPW. Do we have a, is there a clicker with a laser on it? Let me go from here. Maybe you could do it, because you know, the practice, we're gonna do a boring over in the practice field, and then over in the softball field. Beginning this spring, all of the fields are off limits, except for Pierce. And so one of the things we're actually, we, we have a lot, a number of subcommittees of the, of the building committee that meet. But there's one committee that is an internal committee, because it's basically all of the, the nitty-gritty, is a transition phasing. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that we're dealing with in terms of beginning the process of actually moving. There's a lot going on with the Parmeter building right now. Bids have just come in. We're looking at some of the bid documents and perhaps negotiating about those. We have to do a lot of planning with respect to what the move, when the move is gonna take place, what kind of boxes we're gonna use. There's just a lot of things that has to be thought about in each aspect of this. But what will happen in March is that the circular drive in front of the school will still be operational. But we're gonna, beginning to start seeing fencing. And the fencing is gonna start in April. And when, can we do the next, the next slide? When we put these in, they, they didn't come out in color. But what's gonna start happening in April, we're gonna start putting fencing around the area. Some of the trees on the inner part of the drive are gonna, are gonna have to come down. The trees that are along Mass Ave, they will be fenced in by formula in terms of the diameter of the base, how far out the fencing will go. There's gonna have to be, along the front, right now, the, there is a culvert that goes under the high school, and that, all that water has to be re-diverted. So there's gonna be a trench that's gonna be dug in the front of the high school, six foot deep, in order to, to do a diversion on the culvert. Sometime later in April, right down the middle of the front park, is going to be a new driveway that will access some visitor parking on the right as you come up. But it basically, you can only go left. So there still will be some drop-off there. But everything to the right towards CVS is gonna be off limits, at least for several months. Later on, we'll get some pictures to show you of what will happen in terms of the walkway that will be in existence. So we're, we're starting to move into a phase where there's gonna be, it's gonna be noticed. There's gonna start to have some inconvenience to people as they get used to this, in terms of where you have to park, what door you're gonna be coming in. For students, I don't think you're gonna see much, you know, they're, they will notice that they're not walking up in, in April along the full circular drive. They'll be coming to the front of the school and walking in. But the front door, and all the doors in front, will be used as they are right now. There will, as we start doing more geothermal, fortunately, they're far enough away from the high school that the noise that those are going to generate are going to be, pardon?
You want this up there with the pictures?
Shows the arrows and everything of what you're talking about.
Yeah. When we scanned it, it didn't scan in its color.
It's on the building project website.
She has different versions, though.
I have different, these are the most, these were updated last week. That probably is not.
He said two-four.
Two-four? Oh, they say two-four.
See it from the forum?
Next time, next meeting, the twenty-seven, we'll, we'll make sure all these are in color, so you can see it a lot better. But the, we had a, we had a community forum on the fourth, which you're aware of, and we talked a bit about that. We're going to probably need to have a parent meeting to talk about, you know, what's going to be happening, what students are going to expect. There will be meetings with the students themselves over the spring. But it is, everybody's been hearing about the building project for, for quite some time now. And now you're gonna start seeing some of the changes that are going to be, going to be happening. I think one thing that I do want to emphasize that came up before, and it came up again in the, in some comments that've come in, and also forum, is that even though we've reduced the number of geothermal wells down from what was originally estimated, we haven't changed the sustainability goals. We are going to accomplish very, very close in terms of the energy that we had planned from the, the larger numbers. In fact, there's a blog on the website that those that wanna get into more detail about why that's the case can read. So it is, it is now starting to happen. And it's beginning in some, some earnest. So we'll, we'll talk more about that, obviously, every meeting, in terms of what to anticipate over the, the next month, and continue all the planning that's gonna go on. Does anybody have any questions, or, or do you wanna add anything? The chair of the building committee is here.
No, I, I think, no, I think the committees worked really hard. And, you know, we're, we're still developing, you know, making decisions about exteriors and other things. And so there's still work that we're working on. And but I think the committees worked really hard. Design team has worked hard. Kathy's worked hard. So we had a good forum the other night. I would say half the people there were abudders who had concerns about the project. And half the people were parent, were parents who had questions about what was gonna impact their children. And probably, we need to have a separate forum for parents.
Right after that forum, when people were talking about some of these concerns.
Yeah.
One of the concerns, of course, was damage to their own homes. And it wasn't a couple days later, was that article on the front page of the Globe about Needham.
Yeah, so.
But at the forum, our owners, Askanska, did say that they were going to be taking pictures so that we, we do this. And, you know, we, there's gonna be a lot of care given to not having that repeated, and watching the decibel levels and the earthquake parts of this as we go forward.
Dr. Allison Ampey?
Yeah, I saw the article also. It was nice, because at the forum, they talked about how Skanska slash Consigli plants to be proactive, looking at, at abutting homes and doing assessments and documentation before the fact, which was not done in Needham. And so I think what they saw is not gonna be our experience. The other thing I wanted to point out is we didn't, we had a nice turnout from a forum. But if anyone was unable to attend, we've got both the replay from ACMI up on the website, as well as all the presentations and, and handouts and things. So you can see them in color and look at them. And then if there's any questions, they can send them onto the building committee.
So I have one question slash suggestion. I mean, the idea of, I dropped my son off. I admit, I admit, I'm adding to the problem. But, but the number of people that have to pull into the driveway to get their kids just a little bit closer to the door is a little bit ridiculous to me. And, and, and putting a, the special driveway in the middle and having parents drive in there And putting the special driveway in the middle and having parents drive in there just doesn't seem like a great idea. They should be able to drop them off on Mass Ave, you need that driveway to access the parking, but.
We need it for, we need it for emergencies, too. We have the nurses' office still in the front of the building. What's going to happen in September is the nurses' office is going to go to Downs House, where, you know, where the playground is in the back there, the circuit, that's where the nurses' office is going to go, and then any ambulance will come in on this, off of Mill. So we still need access until the end of the school year to the front door for that reason.
Right, because put an authorized vehicle only.
We would, we would prefer parents just drop their son or daughter off on Mass Ave, or if you're coming from the west side of town, maybe just drop them off at the bank, there is a crossing, there is a crossing light there.
Yes, Dr. Alasnapi?
I'd just point out that it's not always drop-off. Just last week, I had to come early and pick my child up because, from the nurses' office, and that, you know, I don't want, until we have to, it was nice not to make her walk across.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
But you're right, and we probably should keep mentioning that at the meeting, is that, please, just drop off on Mass Ave, or the back, as you've done in the past. All right, a few other things. The, we had a group of physics students that applied to present at the Learn Launch Conference, which is a major conference in Boston, and they were one of, I think we had about 20, 20 groups of students from different schools, and they're going to come at our next meeting to talk about their project, which had to do with studying infrared light. So I just wanted to tell you that, and we'll honor them at that time. For the second time in the last 10 years, the Arlington High School quiz team qualified to move on into the final 17, and the first televised round is going to be this Saturday, the 15th, at 6 o'clock on GBH, and they're up against Acton Boxborough. So there is a, on the high school website, there is a nice video that I would, high school parents, or any parents, and the community members might want to see, in terms of interviewing the students who are, who are on that team. So go AHS. Kindergarten registration began, and we had a large turnout, as expected, during that first, it will continue, it will continue until forever, honestly. But one of the things we did say to people is if they were in that January 22nd to 28th, they would, anybody who was in a buffer zone would have the same, the same place on the list, there was no, in fact, there was no list. And we went through and did all the buffer zone assignments, that's all been sent out this week. We'll continue to do that, we want to make sure that all the parents know that if they apply to the after-school programs by 6:00 PM on March 2nd, they are on equal footing with every other parent for a placement. And so any buffer zone students that are in buffer zones will get their assignment prior to that date, so that they have that same opportunity, and then it'll just be ongoing after that. We are, I'm sure, what you're most interested in is how many do we have right now? And we have, it's every day. I think we're off of probably around 370 students. We had 90-some in the buffer zones, and we are predicting that we will have 543. And interestingly, we are almost identically on track as to where we were last year. So we shall see. Newsletter went out this week, and there were a couple of important things in there, I want, I don't usually do this, but I do want to emphasize. One is that the, the US Census is going to be coming out in March, you mentioned this before, but also puts some numbers to the impact, that for every person, a state will get $2,400. So if you take that over 10 years, that's a sizable amount of money that you would not get otherwise. And it's, it's really important that people respond to that, and as well as congressional seats. We've lost congressional seats in Massachusetts, but perhaps we would pick something up. I don't know if the numbers would warrant that this time, but it is, it is significant. And I think the thing that is, some people are concerned about is confidentiality. The Bureau for Census is required by law to keep all information confidential, confidential within the US government, too. So I just encourage people to do that. Then I also want to call out, acknowledge our counselors and social workers. Last week was the school counseling week, and I think that it's important to have this moment to acknowledge them, because there's a lot of students that are able to be in school and be successful in school due to the support that they receive from our counselors and social workers. So I want to thank them and acknowledge them. The other thing is that this year, and this will go out, last year, we had a speaker that was very well-received, who had conversations, courageous conversations about cultural and racial issues, Dr. Eliza Talanum, and she is going to be coming back again this spring. We have three sessions set up, March, April, and May, and that will be open to, the target audience is all of our K through 8 parents, but it's certainly open to the community as well. And we will, we will be publicizing that. The first one will be held at Thompson, the second at Downs, and the third one at Gibbs. Let me see what else here. Well, I think what's on every teacher's and student's minds is that tomorrow's the last day before break. And it is, happens to be Valentine's Day also, so that's always an exciting day in schools. So it's an opportunity for these, this winter break, to have students get healthy, teachers get healthy. Hopefully, our teachers won't get sick, you know, which often happens when you start slowing down, but it is a chance to just air out these buildings and get everybody healthy for the, the spring part of this year. So that concludes my report.
Great. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Sure, of course.
It's in the newsletter. I just want to call your attention to the film, I almost forgot. The screening of Intelligent Lives. This is going to take place in the high school. It is a, it is a film about students with disabilities and how they, how they manage in their schooling and workforce lives, and calling attention about what is intelligence. So I think it's going to be a wonderful presentation. It is funded by the Arlington Education Foundation, or it's, I think it's being supported by that, but it's also being supported by CPAC, right?
So the high school specialized staff got a grant through the organizers of the film, they were offering it, and so there'll be a panel discussion.
Panel discussion with it? It's free, but do you have to get reserved tickets?
We have an Eventbrite sign up.
Eventbrite, yeah, okay. That's it, thank you.
What was that?
What day?
Oh, it's on Monday, March 9.
I did have one question.
Sure.
I was approached by someone about how notices went out about kindergarten registration, just the usual way, right? Email, letter, I mean, how'd you?
We mail out as many ways, get it out as many ways as possible.
Okay. Okay. Fine.
It's still sort of a passive process, because, you know, we don't know who's out there.
Yeah, I know.
That needs to register.
Yeah.
I think principals have encouraged people that are in their schools to, if they know they have siblings, and what often happens is it's the parents who have children coming up that wait to the summer to register.
Yeah.
It's an interesting phenomenon.
It's the third kid syndrome.
It's the third kid syndrome.
We're past that stage.
All right. Great, thank you. All right. Their consent agenda, all items listed will be considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee is requested, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 20150 dated 1/28/2020 in the amount of 1,28068.17. Approval of minutes from 1/9/2020 and 1/23/2020, and approval of the Arlington High School MASC Student Council Conference in Hyannis in March 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
Policy, there's nothing to discuss. Subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget, Dr. Alasnapi?
So, budget met Monday morning, and we had a good discussion first about ski team, hearing from parents this time, and getting some background on what their view of finances and the advantages of having a varsity team. We've, I'm going to, I'm reaching out to Mr. Bowler and Michael Mason to get some more information on what their assessment of the finances are for us to have some idea of numbers. The subcommittee also felt that we need to start discussing athletic fees and kind of the process by which we decide, we determine which teams are varsity, that we accept for varsity, and that we really should probably get this done by June. So, and we decided that it makes sense for budget to be working on this, although you could argue a little bit about policy, but we're willing to do the work, so unless policy wants to take it over, no, okay, yeah, I just want to, okay, so we're going to start working on how this should happen. But that also is dependent on the status of the school department's take on fees and adjusting them. And this has been something since we haven't had stability in the athletic directors, it's come up in discussion, but it hasn't gone forward. So we had that, we also had a little bit of, we just saw the budget, didn't have too many questions about it, because we hadn't had a chance to peruse it yet, and we'll be scheduling another meeting soon.
Great, thank you. Policies and procedures.
No report, except that if you are a subscriber to the MASC list, there's a little bit of a discussion about what happens when somebody sends an email to all seven members of the school committee, which is an interesting question, in that if we start responding individually with each other in the collection, it is deliberative and a very definite violation of open meeting law. So how do we handle that? We don't have a specific policy, in that I think what we should do is codify the policy that in the event of, of an email addressed to all seven of us, that the chair will respond, will direct it as appropriate, and will include it in the correspondence with the notification back to the person who wrote it, that because of the open meeting law requirements, the other members of the committee cannot respond to the bulk email. Something to that nature, but I think that that's something we need to talk about and to place in our policy for clarity.
There was, we don't, can't discuss the actual policy, but go ahead.
I just want to say, we already have a legal opinion, because myself and a former member stepped into this issue, and Liz gave us specific how to handle this, and it, I'm just sharing that it's there already.
But we need to put it in our policy manual and make it very specific.
She addressed that, so, whatever.
You know, maybe we, I think that it's something, it's something we should look for, because the question was, is this in your policy manual specifically that was going around to other committees? And I don't want to go into any more depth. Think about it, so that, you know, we can play with it in subcommittee, but I just wanted to put that before us, as something that we should at least think about.
There was also a large set of policy revisions that they put out recently.
Yeah, we're going to have to take a look at those, too, yeah.
Great. They didn't seem very urgent, but.
No, they're, they're pretty pro forma.
Great. All right. Curriculum instruction, assessment, and accountability, Ms. Morgan.
I have reached out to Dr. Bodie and her team, so that we can set a meeting when they're ready to look at the SOA as needed.
Great, thank you. Community relations, Mrs.
We have a meeting on the 24th.
Okay. Facilities, Mr. Hayner.
Met with the PTO of Odison and Gibbs, they were hoping for a lot more people, but we were in competition with the building rebuild. It was a good meeting, and it turned out well. Thank you.
My wife said it's a good job, Bill.
All five of us.
And I heard the PA system's working again, so that's good. You fixed something.
We got tape.
Arlington High School Building Committee, we heard about.
March 3rd is our next meeting.
Okay.
Tuesday, March 3rd.
Calendar committee?
Yeah, we met last week. We had a skeleton group from the committee, so we felt we couldn't make any decisions, but we're continuing to look at possible new calendar looks, you know, so that we can get the information better, potentially adding policies around homework on religious holidays that we don't have day off on. And, and then just through the continued discussion, which I think is just going to take much longer, about whether to reconsider having school days on the religious holidays that we currently have off, and I just think that's a longer community discussion that's not going to be decided this year.
Okay, thank you.
Skeleton committee, are you looking at Halloween?
Are we looking, oh, at days off?
Skeleton Halloween.
Oh, skeleton, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stop, Paul.
Or maybe that's just for sale.
Oh, maybe time to adjourn.
Election modernization committee?
Yeah, we met, let's see, last week, or no, the week before last, just to talk about the warrant articles. There's going to be a warrant article on ranked choice voting, a warrant article on changing how, how the vote happens for town meeting positions, so that people with the most vote will get three-year positions, and if there's a one or two-year, people with fewer votes would get the one or two-year, sort of, just sort of making, that makes better sense. And there was a third one that I, right now, at this very moment, can't remember.
Where, right, where to vote?
Well, where we're going to vote is definitely under the consideration, there's a survey that went out to the community, and we're still giving back the results. So the thought is, oh, and the third one is to try to extend the meeting, to extend the committee, because they just can't get the decisions made. The survey that went out, until they get all those results, you really can't, we have some preliminary results about which precincts are problematic, but we need the whole thing to really evaluate it.
Okay. Superintendent, search process.
The RFPs on the street will schedule a meeting around the opening of the bids.
Great. Nothing? Liaison reports, any liaison reports? Announcements, any announcements? Future agenda items? No. All right. Executive session, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation of negotiation with union and or non-union personnel, or conduct negotiations with union and non-union personnel which held, which have held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, particularly the, the traffic supervisors agreement, conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, which held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, and executive session, review of the executive session minutes from April 2018 through December 2018. Motion to end the session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Dr. Alasnapi?
Yes.
Alssus?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
We won't be, we will not be coming back from executive session. We won't be, we will not be coming back from executive session.